Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhardt.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marks.
Here.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Jim McDecky.
Here.
Robert Swenson. Here. Wonderful. Alderman Cummings did advise us earlier today that he would not be present this evening. We'll begin our city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask our distinguished guest, the junior from Geneva Community High School, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That's a perfect segue, isn't it? Because I know you guys both have the agenda in your hand. So tonight, we have the pleasure of welcoming our guests from Geneva Community High School to help us proclaim, under item 3A, October 23rd through the 29th, as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Geneva. Ladies?
I'm a shorty. Good evening. My name is Lisa Meister, and I teach health at Geneva High School. I'm also the sponsor for the Star Club, which stands for Students Taking an Active Role. We used to be the SAD Club, Students Against Destructive Decisions, and we changed the name about a year ago because we felt that Star Club best represented what we do in the community as far as community service, helping students build assets that make them responsible role models for other younger kids. And Grace Han is one of our co-presidents for the Star Club this year. She's a junior at Geneva High School. She's also a star tennis player who just qualified for state last week.
I know.
So she's competing this week. And Grace has done a really nice job with the Star Club already this fall, really trying to promote the program, recruiting new members, talking about it in all of her classes, and getting fellow students and her peers to join us at our meetings. So I'm going to let her take over, because I'm sure you'd much rather hear from her than from me. But she's going to talk a little bit about what Red Ribbon Week means, why we have this celebration on the national level every year, and what it means to her personally.
Welcome, Grace.
Hello. Well, my name is Grace Han, and I would like to thank you all for allowing me the time at your meeting to recognize the importance of Red Ribbon Week. The entire nation celebrates this week each year to send a message to the community about taking responsibility for your health and making mature decisions regarding substance abuse. The Red Ribbon Committee aims to help children and teens build strong assets to stay on the right track and away from substances. We know that there is a lot of pressure on teens, especially in the school settings, to try to fit in with different groups, and a lot of that pressure is placed on them by their own perceptions of what normal behavior looks like. The Red Ribbon Committee and the Star Club try to send a different message to teens to let them know what the real norm is, that most teens are not out there using drugs in their free time. Most teens spend their time with their families and friends in a safe way to act as positive role models for the younger children in the community. The most important thing is to encourage the adolescents in your life to focus on the path they wish for their future and to do what it takes to achieve their goals, which includes ignoring pressure from others to engage in destructive behaviors. So this past spring, I met someone from school who seemed like a pretty nice and cool person, but after only knowing them for a few days, they offered me drugs and asked if I had ever smoked before or if I wanted to. I applied saying I hadn't, and I wasn't into those kinds of things. We kept talking for a bit throughout the summer, but they kept talking about how often they smoked, which was very frequently, and elaborated on the bad decisions they were making. Eventually, I completely cut off the relationship because I realized, even if I didn't engage in the behavior myself, I didn't need to associate with people who are bad influences and that would pressure me and probably others as well to go down the wrong path. I have many goals I want to achieve in my life, and I don't have time to deviate from my healthy path to a road where my future can be ruined by just one try. Drugs are never worth risking your future. Please take a moment to talk about healthy decision-making under pressure within your own families as well as the community. Again, thank you for your time and attention to this important celebration.
Thank you, Grace. Would you care to perhaps answer a few questions that the council might have?
Of course.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, any questions or comments for Grace? Alderman McGowan.
Hi, Grace. It's so nice to have you here this evening, and thank you for your wonderful presentation. This isn't an easy subject for a lot of teenagers to talk about, but I'm kind of wondering, what would your advice be, or what would Star Club's advice be for a student at Geneva High School, or any teenager who is already maybe spending time with other kids who are doing drugs, maybe have even tried doing drugs themselves, and they're at a point where they don't know where to go? What would you say to that person?
I would say, at the school, especially with everything that's been going on recently, like, there's always people that are willing to help you, and if you think there's nowhere else to turn, there always is. Knowing myself, too, I'm always, I know there's other people like me out there at the school who, even if you don't know someone, like, I'm glad to help anybody who would come to me and say, "You know, I need some help." And it's just important to just separate yourselves from people that are bad influences, and even if it's hard, it's going to help you in the future. So, I mean, I'd just suggest going to somebody you trust, even at the school, too, because I know there's a lot of resources there that are able to help, like the counseling office, and even Mrs. Meister. Like, go to her, and she can totally help you, and everybody there is just such a positive influence, so I definitely suggest that.
Anyone else? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Grace, for spending your time here. I'm curious, nicotine vaping and cigarettes, is vaping more prevalent at high school, or is it prevalent?
Yeah, there's people who I know who do it at school, and I just know of them, and it's pretty prevalent. It's more vaping than cigarette use at school.
Thank you. Anyone else from the dais? So Grace, may I pivot? Let's talk about your state qualifying for tennis. So, when's the first match?
Thursday, in the morning, so no school.
Where?
It's at, we actually don't know the location yet.
Well, you don't?
It's in Buffalo Grove, some school around there. There's like a 40-minute, they're all around. I'm not really positive yet, sorry.
That's exciting.
I'm so excited.
I can only imagine. So how many other of your teammates qualified?
Me and my doubles partner qualified, and then the first singles player, Caroline Leahy.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Wow. Your Blue Coo does a good job on Twitter.
Yes.
Yeah, it was wonderful, so. Now, obviously, you're an athlete, you're a student, and you're clearly a representative and ambassador for this club. Do the three become challenging at times in terms of what message you're conveying, or do you believe you convey all three messages because of who you are?
I think honestly, I've been playing tennis since I was 10 and 1/2, and it just has taught me so many life lessons about how hard work, that's been a moral in our family forever, and hard work is what gets you places in life, and you need to have the strength to say no to things that, like, being in Star Club, I'm promoting, like, the anti-drug, anti-substance abuse, like, message, and I think through tennis, I've just known that you need to have the strength to say, just need to have strength in your life around school, in tennis, in sports, in clubs, and everything. I think it's just an overall important thing to have, so I think I can balance it all pretty well, and they all convey the same message.
Well said. I think echoing what Alderman McGowan said, the challenge of being a role model at age 16 or 17, I would assume there's huge obstacles to being so simply because of peer pressure.
Peer pressure is a big problem at many schools, just, there's always people who are trying to get you to go down the wrong path, and there's constantly, even people you think you know, like, you can find out the next day that they are doing things you don't agree with, which is hard, because you want to continue having, like, a friendship with this person, or knowing this person and talking to them, and it's hard to maybe distance yourself from them, or like, cut off the relationship, but, you know, I like to think about my life as a whole, and high school is just the beginning of, I wouldn't want it to end anytime soon, so I just want to make the right decisions now that put me on a good track for the future, and I think if I and my fellow Star Club members show that, that we will show like a positive peer pressure instead of the negative connotation that it has. So I think if we keep spreading this message, then more people are going to want to do the right thing, and the norm isn't going to be, or people won't think that the norm is going down the wrong path, but the norm will be doing the right thing.
Well stated. Alderman Kilburg.
I know that there's activities planned for the week. Maybe you might want to elaborate on a few of the things that will be taking place as it relates to Red Ribbon Week. I know that we've gotten elementary schools involved in the past. I know that Geneva's been decorated in red, I know in past years. Are some of these things planned for the next week?
Yeah, at the school, we have our theme days where we'll, Star Club promotes the Red Ribbon Week, like, the way you dress, like, each day, and I know that we're getting, like, drug-free stickers and trying to, like, promote it in, like, fun ways for high schoolers to want to participate in, and I know the elementary schools and middle schools all have presentations and things that they do to promote the...
I can add to that, too. One of the other things that we always do every year is we take Mayor Burns's proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, and we disseminate it among the stores in downtown Geneva, and so we ask the students who are in the Star Club to do that, to teach them a little bit about advocacy, and to teach them about going in and introducing themselves, and being professional, and talking to a manager, and asking that manager if they would help us declare a Geneva-wide, a city-wide Red Ribbon Week in order to help promote our message. One of the other things that we do as a staple for Red Ribbon Week is we do a food drive for the church down the street, that's the Tri-Cities Food Pantry, and I know their shelves are very, very bare, and they're struggling to keep food on the shelves for those families that are in need, and so that's a fun thing that we do in the building, and we use it as a way to promote asset building, like I mentioned before. The students who get involved in their community, and who want to give back, and who want to do positive things, are less likely to make some of those, you know, tougher, more negative decisions, because they know that the community's got their eye on them. They know that they're being looked up to as role models, and that's also part of why our club does like a 5th grade mentoring program called SS Raiders, because we want our teens to realize that, hey, these 5th graders in the district are looking up to you, and they're watching you, and they're watching the newspaper, or they're watching Twitter, or they're watching Facebook, and they're seeing what's going on in our community. So the teens that are there setting that tone are really setting a positive tone, and so we use the food drive as one of those things that we do, in addition to a lot of volunteer work that we do at the Lazarus House as well.
Wonderful. Anyone else? Ladies and gentlemen, is there a motion to so-proclaim? Moved by Alderman Marks, seconded by Alderman Kilburg. All in favor of the proclamation of October 23rd through the 29th as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Geneva, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Well done, Grace.
Thank you.
May I present this to you?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Should we get the seals back on there? Shut.
It's fantastic.
Next time, stop.
Yes. Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, smooth exit there, Ms. Meister. Well done. See you, guys. Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, is the City of Geneva Community Development Department report. Our director, Mr. DeGroot, is with us this evening, and I know he has his teammates with him as well. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, over the past several years, every time we've had an opportunity to present to the council, we've tried to cover one of our, I guess, kind of core responsibilities as a department. The Community Development Department's broken into two divisions, the Building and Zoning Division and the Planning Division. I think over the last six or seven years that we've been doing this, we've managed to cover each one of these topics, and our roles to the various commissions and boards, permitting, inspections, plan review, long-range planning, but we haven't gotten to property maintenance and code enforcement, so that's the topic that we're going to cover tonight. I just wanted to take a brief moment to introduce Jim Forney, our Code Enforcement Officer. He's going to go through kind of what property maintenance code enforcement covers, what it doesn't cover, what the process looks like, some of the challenges he faces, and then some of the other initiatives we take in that area. I believe Jim has been the only Code Enforcement Officer the city has had, so there's no one better suited to speak to this.
All right. I wish I would have had Grace prepare my statement. She did a great job. You saw on the last slide that this is the last presentation for this department. I like to think it's because they were saving the best for last, but Dave said something about being a problem child, so here's where we are. Anyway, and of course, I've never done this before.
I said the arrow down.
Arrow down. Where's that, Dave?
Right in the space.
I gotcha. All right. So to start off, the purpose of code enforcement is to proactively, and proactively is the key word in this, proactively enforce the adopted property maintenance code, zoning ordinance, and other property maintenance-related ordinances of the city. This does cover a lot of different ordinances in a lot of different areas, but not all of them. So I only have jurisdiction over certain sections of certain ordinances. Part of the responsibilities, just part of it, not limited to, is the dangerous building or property conditions. Something along that lines would be if, you know, your railing is falling off, which presents itself as a, obviously, on a second floor, you could fall through it and break your neck, broken-down fences, that type of a thing. Accumulation of garbage pretty much explains itself, but we do have some people around town that do have a proclivity towards collecting, and we try to keep that under control by routine inspections. Also, we handle excess animals that are residents, and when we're talking about excess animals, we're talking about domesticated animals only. We're talking about dogs and cats. You're allowed to have a total of three dogs and/or cats or any combination. Anything over that is a violation. We don't usually get involved in that until we get a complaint from somebody. So in other words, if it's become an issue. I will also issue stop-work orders, and that can be for either residential or commercial, and that, again, is self-explanatory. Somebody has started a job without getting a permit. If we get information towards that, we'll go over there and see what's going on, and if necessary, stop the work. After we've stopped it on-site, and then I follow it up with a letter. Excuse me. Inoperable unlicensed vehicles, it's a junk vehicle, it's just somebody who hasn't either had time to work on their car, and it's been sitting there for a while, the plates have expired now, it becomes an eyesort of the neighborhood because the tires are off, hoods up. Exterior building standards, that can be something as simple as peeling paint. Violations of the home occupation ordinance, that is always a fun one. The rule of thumb basically is if we're not getting a complaint, you must be doing it right, because it's pretty standard, you can't have any exterior indication that you're having a home occupation, it just has to, it cannot deviate at all from the residential character of your neighborhood, and that can mean numbers of cars in the driveway, that can mean signs out in front. No deviation from a normal household from the street. Trailer storage, trailer storage can cover two different categories. There are recreational trailers, boats, campers, they're allowed to be in the front yard for a maximum of 24 hours, both before and after your trip, for the purpose of loading and unloading, getting things all cleaned up, and then after that, it's got to go into storage or inside the garage. Tall grass, tall grass is, is, I'm not going anywhere. Space park. Tall grass is, you know, typically, the only time we ever really get involved in a tall grass is going to be with vacant structures. The ordinance does say that anything over eight inches is required to be mowed down. When we get into a situation where we've got a vacant structure and the bank is not taking care of it, then after we notify the bank, we then have the authority to go onto the property and mow the grass. Now, that does not typically cover things like planting beds, and long fence signs are just getting in there, doing a quick mowing of the main body of the yard. The whole idea is to make sure that, what we're trying to avoid in that case, it's not really aesthetics, it's harborage. We just want to make sure we don't have a bunch of animals taking up residency in the tall grasses. As far as priorities, what I end up doing is, every year, I make a list of anywhere between 20 and 40 different residences that need varying degrees of attention, because we do have so many of them, I end up sometimes having to prioritize. In other words, I will prioritize rotting siding, you know, something that has been painted on a while, it's rotting, you know, whether it's the downspouts or dumping directly on it, and it's causing advanced rot, I'll end up prioritizing that over somebody who's just got checked paint. Vehicles, same thing. I'll end up prioritizing sometimes over a disabled vehicle, something that's obviously a junker, over them just having expired plates by 30 days. And again, as far as, you know, the way I handle it, I am looking for more quality-of-life issues over just aesthetics. I mean, aesthetics obviously play in the quality of life, but, you know, the focus is on, sometimes, is on the neighbors, not so much the property. I want to be able to make sure that they're able to come home without looking at a mess next door. Some of the misconceptions that we've had that have come into the office is that my office or my department, my position, is responsible for any animals that run at large and the removal of excreta. I did have a slide for that, but Dave took it out. That is actually a police department, that's under their jurisdiction, that's what the ordinance is written, how it's written, same thing with junk vehicles on the street, and general noise or odor complaints. Noise complaints obviously being parties or even factories that are running some kind of a machine that, for some reason or another, this week has decided to make more noise than it typically would, and same for the odor complaints. I know that we had, you'll recall, a couple of businesses on Kirk Road where the complaints came in that it smelled too much like blueberries, and we got complaints about that. I like blueberries. Public Works Department handles all hazardous trees, public and private, so that's not something that I would be able to get involved with. The forester goes out there and he determines if a tree is in fact a hazard, and that's a hazard, almost has to be a public hazard, public nuisance. It can be a hazard if it's just something as simple as, you know, the huge limb is hanging over, a huge dead limb is hanging over somebody's deck, but for the most part, it is if it's a public hazard. And then, of course, clearing of the sidewalks, we get calls all the time for people upset because their neighbors don't shovel their sidewalk. We don't have any ordinance that would require them to shovel their sidewalk. If we did, it'd be a difficult task, but that is something that, you know, public sidewalks, for the most part, is all public works. Once a complaint does come in, or not when it comes in, if somebody has a complaint, they can either do one of two things. They can either call me directly, which quite honestly is the preferred for me, or they can go onto the Civic Plus and report it online. Both work equally as good, as far as communication, back and forth, it's easier for me if it comes in directly to me, instead of having to go through, work through the limitations of the program as far as communicating back and forth. All right. When we do get a complaint, the basic processes that I'll go out and I'll verify whether or not it is in fact a complaint. I do this, again, you know, if we get the complaints in, but I also do that in routine patrol, or routine, what I refer to as routine patrol, but just routine checks in the neighborhoods. Kind of, I try to hit every neighborhood as best I can, at least once every two weeks. In some neighborhood, it's more often than that, because it might require more eyes. After it's been verified, I'll send out a letter informing them of what the violation is, and instructing them as to what they need to remediate that violation, and then giving them a reasonable amount of time to get it corrected. If they don't get it corrected after the first notice, I will send a second, and sometimes even a third notice. I don't want to say escalating, but basically, the first notice is kind of, here's the rules, please take care of it. Second notice might be a little bit more, you know, if you don't take care of it, we might have to go to court, and then the third notice kind of throws in the fines, potential fines. Usually, that gets it cleaned up. If it does not get it cleaned up, and we are forced, and I will say forced, to go into adjudication, you know, as it says up here, the resident has a right to show up, obviously, and make their case, they can bring in any kind of evidence, or lawyers, or anybody else they want to do it, it's a full-blown hearing, and then, obviously, the hearing officer will then make a judgment as to whether there's liability or not. Typically, what we will do is we will set a new date for compliance, assuming that they were found liable, setting a new date for compliance with, again, the option that a fine could be ordered, but what we're looking for is compliance, so I do try to avoid that level. Some of the challenges of adjudication, part of the problem is some of the cases that end up having to go to adjudication, or oftentimes go to adjudication, are situations like trailers and things like that, and what happens is, we'll send them the one, two, three notices, maybe even more than that, and then the day of the hearing, it mysteriously gets moved, so now we're in compliance. The hearing officer is not always interested in finding that individual for that violation, but then again, we can be back in front of the hearing officer in three or four months again because of it, so recidivism can be a problem with that. Financial abilities, like anything else, we can fine them, but can they afford to pay the fine? Repeated offenses, that's a recidivism, typically dismissed if in fact there is compliance, and then we don't recoup any of the costs of taking it to that level. We are willing, you know, as far as the financial difficulties, this applies not only to adjudication, but even before it, I am more than willing, as some of you can attest, to work with a property owner towards compliance. That could mean several months, that could mean a couple of years, you know, on some of the bigger cases. We've got a guy that's been painting his house one side at a time for over five years, figure that out. He started again on the first side, but he's getting there, and it's going to look fantastic. It's what we were looking for in that particular case. If we can't get them to handle it financially, then we have asked volunteer organizations to step forward, see if they can help out, we've asked churches to do the same. The Rotary Club has been fantastic. They have stepped forward more often than not. Also, we have a fourth option, which is the Kane County Housing Rehab Program, which is available to most any resident of the county, certain areas are excluded, like Aurora, but they can show, if they can show their economic standing, they may qualify for up to $20,000 to make the repairs, and these are all typically pairs that relate to code enforcement, not new shutters. Fiscal year 2017, our goal was to kind of refresh a lot of the planting along Randall Road. Whenever there was a planned unit development that required certain types of landscaping as far as screening, oftentimes, that landscaping has either died back, or some tenant has taken it upon himself to clear the sign. Fiscal year 2017, our goal was to kind of refresh a lot of the planting along Randall Road. Whenever there was a planned unit development that required certain types of landscaping as, as far as screening, oftentimes that landscaping has either died back or some tenant has taken it upon himself to clear the sign of that obnoxious tree that is blocking his sign. We've been working with the property owners and have gotten a lot of that stuff reestablished in a lot of cases, such as the sign being blocked. If they can offer up a suggestion as to what might work instead, and that would be even for weather reasons, we'll look at that and make a determination if it meets the intent, and if it does, approve it, and that, that's what gets put in. They have been, most of the, most of all, if not all, the retailers so far have been very cooperative with that. It has not been that big of an issue, once it was brought to their attention, they took care of it. For the next year, we're looking at commercial, for the most part, commercial parking lots. A lot of the parking lots, you know, along Randall Road have been in place now for over twenty years, and they're starting to show it. I've been able to get a lot of the really bad ones fixed up year after year, but they're just kind of fixed up, they're patched up. What we want to do going forward is kind of set more of a design guideline as far as what's bad and what isn't, is it a crack, is it a pothole, what is it? And then we'll contact the ones with, with, with the worst situation, and then also try to put on notice or let the other ones know it's coming around the corner, because one more winter and you're going to lose most of your parking lot. And again, we're going to work on getting some design standards as far as what is and what isn't. The only thing we've been able to use in the past was what the state of Illinois uses for highways, and it's not always, that doesn't always work for us. How to help as far as from the alderman? Quite easily, it's, you know, if you can direct every call that you get directly to me, it just makes it so much easier to be able to be consistent in the responses. And, you know, as far as what we can do and what we cannot do, unfortunately, you know, there are some times that we, I get a call saying that they talked to their alderman and they got the impression, but I can't take impressions to court, so we have to, I have to kind of back them down and explain them what exactly can, we can do or should do. Any questions?
Questions for Officer Forni. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Jim. I know we've had several, any number of cases with properties in the first ward, but the, the hearing officer, when we go to adjudication, who is the hearing officer?
The hearing officer was, actually, it was a, a law firm out of Elgin that, I don't know if they bid on it per se, but because it is a joint effort between St. Charles, Geneva, North Aurora, and Batavia, it was mutually decided that that was the firm we were going to go with, and I think that they've done us very well. We just had a changeover. The officer, the hearing officer who has been handling it for the last five-plus years just was appointed to an associate judge, some kind of a, some kind of a judge. So she's, she's in turn been replaced by Victor Puskis, who, same law firm, he's handled a couple of the cases for us, does a good job.
And thanks for that, but I just wanted to extend my sympathies for the, for the job you have to do sometimes, because we here have to, you know, we, we work with residents sometimes on a positive basis, sometimes there's a negative. You're always interacting with residents on some uncomfortable negative issue, so I hats off to you for that.
Well, thank you. And that is, that is an issue, because a lot of times, you know, the calls I'm getting are either from the person who's frustrated by his neighbor or the neighbor who's now been complained about. So, yeah, it, it gets, it gets frustrating, but we sort through it and get it figured out.
Thanks. Alderman Rodecky.
Uh, thank you. Unlike Alderman Bruno in the first ward, the fourth ward, we don't get many complaints, we're in pretty good shape there, but.
That would be because of, uh, routine patrols and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think it's because of the alderman, but we can discuss.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I meant to say.
What, what's the most common infraction that you get? What's the, what's the number one thing that you see the most?
You know, the, as far as just the everyday routine stuff, the ones that, it doesn't make any difference what neighborhood it's in, is, is going to be, the zoning issues as far as the storage of trailers and things like that. Obviously, we get, you know, the junk vehicles in every neighborhood, we get tall grass in every, every neighborhood, but across the board, probably the most consistent issue is the storage of the trailers, because, you know, a guy has a big, huge, beautiful boat, he thinks it's gorgeous, why can't I park it in front of my house? And that's what we have to, 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 yeah, you might love boating and I love boating, but your neighbor doesn't appreciate looking at the side of it for a week.
Alderman Maladra.
Uh, in terms of numbers, over the past three years, do you see the number of calls going up, staying the same, going down because of the influence of fourth ward alder?
You know, I, I would have to say that it's, I don't want to say it's remained consistent. Maybe it's just because I'm getting older, it just seems like it, it is more, but, you know, the, the numbers are showing, you know, it's, the, the types of violations change, but, you know, it's not, it's, in some, certain areas of town, we've got, I don't want to say a turnover, but there are certain neighborhoods where, you know, we've got a new fresh batch of face, faces every year or two that need to be reeducated as far as what the rules are. And I do consider that to be a chief role in my job, is to educate people. So, you know, the first letter, like I say, it's, it's kind of a soft sell, it's letting them know what the rules are, and nine times out of ten, that's all it takes.
Thanks.
Alderman Kilberg.
I, I think 2017 is a year of note in that we've had several garage fires in the tri-cities, and it seems like garages tend to sometimes become a, a storage area where they're not used as a garage any longer, but just an accumulation of possessions. And I know that in our ward, we had a fire where a garage was pretty well packed and it, it creates a challenge for our fire department. As, as it relates to ordinance, what can be done about garages that seem to be overly packed or you, you have a case of hoarding? Is there anything currently on the books that can be used as, as it relates to trying to improve, reduce the risks, I guess would be the best way to put it, some of the fire risks that are involved?
What do we could? There really is nothing in the code, in an international build, property maintenance code and any code, that really, quite honestly, gives us any authority over the inside of a structure. We can get inside of a, of a residence if we have a complaint, but no other way. So homeowner's not going to call us and say, come on over and take care of my hoarding problem, but we get that in situations in apartments. So we can take care of it that way. As far as a detached garage, you know, really, if, if, if it's all contained within the garage, that's about the best we're going to expect, and, you know, nine times, we don't even know what's in, you know, you can drive up and down the street, and it can be, in Eagle Brook, it can be anywhere, drive up and down the street and the garage door is never up, you have no idea what's back there. And, and we have gotten people calling and saying, oh my God, it's, it's packed, but kind of a mantis castle, and then with a detached garage, there is no real threat to the minor children or something like that, as far as, hopefully they're being kept out.
Thank you.
Alderman Berger.
Hey, Jim, I know you mentioned hoarding, I mean, some of these, you, you deal with some tough issues, right? And I think you do a really good job in terms of being compassionate and empathetic with some people who sometimes are falling on tough times, and a lot of times, some elderly residents, long-term residents, and sometimes there can be some mental illness involved in, in hoarding cases. How do you, we've talked a lot about that, I mean, sometimes I think you're part counselor, part code enforcement, part coach, part volunteer coordinator, because you do get a good job of trying to get local organizations to help out with some of these issues, right?
Yes, ultimately, the, the, the effort is towards helping the resident, not necessarily the neighbor, but the resident. So we will work with, I will work them as best I can as far as getting things cleaned up, as far as getting them in contact with the different agencies that might be able to help them. So many times, some of these more difficult cases, they're not just financial, there's typically some underlying issues that go way beyond that, and, you know, that's not going to be obvious to some people, but in talking with the residents, you know, get a, get a little bit of a history of, of, of their situation, of, you know, how they've gotten, where they've gotten as far as the house is concerned, and, and what their situation is right now as far as finances. Working with one lady who's got a big, beautiful home on the far west side of Geneva and been unemployed for over a year and a half. She's a single, uh, single woman, no income, and the house is starting to show it, but we've tried to put her in contact with, again, with the Kane County or whoever can help that way. So hopefully that'll get taken care of. But, you know, a sad truth there, I shouldn't say the sad truth, the truth is that just because, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but just because somebody lives in Geneva doesn't mean that they are independently wealthy. So the reality of it is, I've got a house where this woman has inherited it from her parents, she has no visible means of support, and she has underlying issues. So, you know, it's, it's taken, it's taken quite a bit to get her to even come to the table, but she has acknowledged it, so we're working towards that.
You have a tough job, and I appreciate how you approach it, so thank you.
Thank you for saying so.
Alderman Bruno. Turn your microphone on, sir.
I don't know if this would be for you, Director DeGroot, city administrator or attorney, but oftentimes, it seems when we're dealing with code enforcement, we, we run into issues that aren't addressable by the city because we're non-home rule. I'm not sure, there are bounds that are put on the city and your position, I don't know if there's something to be added. I guess I just wanted it out there that we, we can only do so much, we can't go inside properties, as you, as you said, but, you know, I would say probably one in three of the issues that come to me from constituents probably can't be addressed simply because it's out of the bounds of city enforcement. Is that a fair assessment?
You know, I don't know exactly what all it would require to become, I mean, that home rule would afford this position. I do know that, you know, well, I'm going to defer.
Right. I think you said it correctly. I mean, there are things that we cannot do because we are non-home rule, and so the only method of achieving some of those outcomes is by going home rule, which can only be done by population or referendum.
I think I'm getting kicked off stage.
Just to add, add to that just a little bit, I mean, there are occasions where maybe we're seeing a routine issue that's, that's not addressed in the code, and we've had policy discussions in the past to discuss text amendments, to put in restrictions on whether it be garage sales or off-site signage, those kind of things, so then we do have the teeth within the ordinance to enforce those regulations.
Alderman Rodecky.
But, and maybe, Stephanie, you can clarify this, to Mike's question and point, you know, the, the home rule issue is not for us to go into people's homes and take a look at things. The, one of the major components of being a non-home rule, or one of the limitations that we have, has to do with rental properties.
Exactly.
Is that probably the biggest?
That's the biggest thing that we think would be the, a good tool, is many communities that are home rule have a home rental inspection program, which would allow us in the home at the time that tenants change. I've worked in other communities that had that, so you go in, you do your inspections before a tenant comes, and make sure that everything's up to code and things are safe for the, the tenant.
And that is, you know, a very excellent tool for this, because a lot of the times we're getting, you know, especially with some of the areas with the rentals, I'm not talking about a single family, I'm talking about like row houses, you know, somebody that's got only four units in there, you know, that the people that are going in there can't necessarily afford a fifteen hundred dollar a month rent, so they're kind of feeling trapped in there, they can't really do anything about it, they can't even call us sometimes because they're afraid of the pushback from the, from the property owner, which clearly they can't do, but that's what their concern is, with the home rule and, and setting it up so that there are routine inspections, we're guaranteed to get into every unit once every couple of years, which would be a great benefit for the tenants.
Anyone else in the, Alderman Kilberg?
I had one question as it relates to people that, driving through Geneva, collecting scrap. Are there any issues as it relates to that at the present time?
There, define issues, there is an ordinance that would require them to, I believe there's still an ordinance, require them to be licensed, that's under the police jurisdiction, I don't know if there actually are being licensed.
Doesn't fall under your jurisdiction at all?
No, no.
What about?
Because that's one of those situations where for you to be able to even, you'd have to be able to affect a traffic stop to even find out if they've got a license. You know, the, I suppose, you know, if I see them picking through garbage in the curb, but no, it's, that is, has been a function of the police department, because there are obviously other safety issues involved.
Would there be any merit to where, if in that, in essence, if you wanted to do any, if you wanted to leave anything at the curb for scrap collection, it would be on the same day as garbage collection?
And that, and that is typically the way it falls?
Well.
Not always. Because, I mean, in, you know, in the reality of it is, if some guy is replacing his washing machine and he's got a guy to help him bring it on on a Monday, you know, it, it gets out there too early, and there, that's a, technically a violation of the ordinance, but, you know, unless he's got a, a large piece of appliance out in the curb every day, it's kind of like you do what you have to do type of a thing.
Well, we had a resident in the third ward was out mowing his lawn just in the last week, and the mower was left, he went inside to answer a phone call, the mower was six feet inside the sidewalk, and was, came out in five minutes, and the lawnmower was picked up by a scrapper.
Did he see the scrapper take it, or?
Well, he was inside answering the phone call. So I'm just saying, what could be done to, to, to do a better job of, of managing that piece of it, and again, maybe that doesn't fall under your jurisdiction, and maybe should fall under public works or possibly under the police department's jurisdiction.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it probably would end up, I mean, it's, it is a police department now, but I could see a situation where, you know, somebody, because the average scrapper doesn't have his name on the side of his truck, you know, I could see a situation where, you know, people start accosting the, the, the guy scrapping it without knowing the full story. I mean, maybe it was there because it was.
It just seemed, it just seems there's some inconsistencies here, like for instance, if you have a car for sale and you put a for sale sign on it and you park it in the street, that's a violation.
Correct.
But you could leave a washing machine and a dryer sitting on the curb for a week, and that's not a violation.
It's a violation.
Well.
It is a violation, make that clear, because, like I said, though, I mean, if, if, I guess what I try to do is, again, we'll go from a, an education standpoint, you know, again, you know, if the, if the guy hasn't had any help to bring it out there on Thursday, but he's got the help on Sunday, he's going to bring it out to the curb. You know, if I, if I was aware of a situation where that was happening routinely, which I know that it's a possibility that, you know, people are out there, I don't want to say scrapping, but they'll, they'll get it from a friend and then put it in, in front of their house in Geneva, but, you know, I, I'm not aware of any abuses of that type of, of a situation, you know, where they have something out there all the time. Clearly, it happens, I see it, but it's, it's, you know, is, is that something that, you know, we, for lack of a better word, want to offend a resident or?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Any questions for our guests in the audience?
Dave?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. DeGroot? Moving on to item 3C, ladies and gentlemen, the City of Geneva Stormwater Utility Presentation. Director Babica is with us, as is almost half the directors of public works, impressive.
Just want to get this ready for our consultant to come up.
You got it.
Little bit of background, while this is getting pulled up, in November of 2015, at the strategic planning session, the city council established the pursuit and review of a stormwater utility as an extremely high of a stormwater utility as an extremely high-ranking endeavor. As a result of that, in February of 2016, the Public Works Department issued an RFP to secure a consultant to conduct a stormwater utility feasibility study. The contract was entered into later on that late spring, early summer. And over the last 12 months, Stantec Consulting Services has conducted a feasibility study for implementing a stormwater utility. David Hyder and his associates are here tonight, and they have a lot of material to cover. So I am going to step aside and see the podium to Mr. Hyder. David?
Good evening, Mr. Hyder.
Good evening. Yeah, it'll just be three or four hours, so don't worry. It's not that long. We'll keep it to 20 minutes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Great to be here. We are going to go over this evening the stormwater feasibility study, and I just want to provide a little bit of background. We're going to talk about the current program, what you do today, what some of the needs are in your system. My colleagues from Baxter Woodman are going to talk about the kind of needs of your system as you manage it today. Going to talk about stormwater utility as a concept, what that potentially would look like. We'll look at a potential range of fees, and then ultimately whether a stormwater utility would be feasible for the City of Geneva. So just to start off in terms of the importance of stormwater management, it's probably the most unrecognized utility that you have, but it's vitally important within the community. And it really meets three primary goals. The first is flood control and property protection. So you need to maintain a stormwater system in order to protect individual and personal property. Got to be able to handle the stormwater during rain events, make sure that it, it is kept away from properties. You also need to make sure your roadways are accessible so that you can have emergency vehicles and, and folks can access their properties. Another key aspect is water quality. So stormwater management is important to protect the natural environment, your local waterways. Stormwater is a big contributor to that as it picks up pollutants from driveways and roads and carries them into the local waterways. So you want to make sure you're managing your stormwater system to handle the quality. And closely related to that is the third one, which is regulatory requirements. The city's stormwater discharges are subject to the Clean Water Act. So as a result, you do have to perform stormwater management activities to comply with your NPDS permit as your discharges are regulated. So that's a little bit of background, what the stormwater system does and why you need to manage it. In terms of your current stormwater program, I think the best way that we could kind of sum it up is that you have a fairly limited stormwater program. Right now, you don't have any dedicated stormwater management staff, so there's nobody that's directly tasked with stormwater management. It's a decentralized program. So as such, you're essentially drawing resources from various departments in the city to manage stormwater. Your budgeted annual expenditures have been around $50,000 to $55,000 per year. So that's what you're spending on stormwater. And those expenditures are funded from sewer fees. So you take a portion of your sewer revenues, and they're essentially used to fund the stormwater program to the tune of that $55,000. The program is currently reactive, so the majority of the stormwater activities are done on an as-needed basis as compared to proactive management of the system. And you do not currently, you don't currently have a defined capital improvement program for the stormwater system. So again, it's, it's a fairly minimal program. That's the best way to sum it up. And I'm going to have Paul come up now and talk a little bit about what it looks like in terms of going forward with the stormwater needs.
Well, as Dave mentioned, the city does spend about $55,000 annually towards this, invested into its drainage system. He also mentioned it's reactive in nature, so as problems come up, that's when the city addresses them. They do also spend, the city also does spend, or does include, I'm sorry, the the level of, the current level of service doesn't, service does include some repairs that are done, stormwater repair, or stormwater improvements that are done along with the roadway work that's done in the city. A more, the, the danger of going down that route is, or continuing on this path, is that infrastructure, as it continues to age within the city, you might have some larger problems that come up down the road that might be costly repairs, and you might not have funding allocated to address those things as they come up. A more comprehensive approach would be to have a target level of service that would include cleaning and maintenance of the existing system, so you can start to catch some of these problems before they become bigger, more expensive issues. It would also include conditions assessments, so things like televising the existing storm sewer system. And then also allocating some funding for capital improvement projects. And then I'll let Dan talk about those.
So, right now, the city does have existing drainage problems, existing flooding problems. Depending on the, the nature of the problems, the way stormwater comes in as far as volume or intensity of storm events, like we just had recently, these problems can be short-term, can be long-term. Sometimes they may appear in certain storms or may not appear in others. It's really depending on the nature of the way the, the stormwater comes through. Right now, we're looking at multiple flooding problems or drainage issues on properties, on streets, like David mentioned. These can impact resident accessibility to their neighborhoods, can impact emergency access to neighborhoods and vehicles and the hospitals. So, like I said, multiple problems. Right now, the city doesn't have a defined plan or a prioritization of these problems for addressing them. A stormwater utility could put the funding behind coming up with that plan and defining those problems, looking at benefits versus costs in the different neighborhoods and the areas of the city, putting that plan together and developing and prioritizing things for improvement projects. Put together a CIP to improve upon these things. It's something that more proactive communities are doing for their stormwater program and their stormwater problems. The city is also a holder of a Clean Water Act permit, which is the municipal separate storm sewer system permit or MS4 permit. This is the permit that governs the quality of the stormwater that's coming out of your storm drain pipes. Not the quantity, but the quality. Illinois EPA comes out, does inspections or audits of your program. Rich's staff participate in those audits. And the program has a lot of new requirements this round. The permit is re-upped every five years. You have to apply for it and, and implement the program with the new requirements in each five-year permit. And the permit that came out this time, just a couple of years ago, really ramped up the requirements for public education and outreach, looking for illicit discharges and illicit or illegal connections to your storm drain system, your management over construction sites, and the post-construction controls, those long-term stormwater controls that have to go into new development. And then all of the pollution prevention activities and the way you implement best management practices to keep pollutants out of your storm drain, what your Public Works crews do, what happens in your streets and inside your catch basin. So the implementation of this permit has really ramped up over time, too. I'm estimating around $40,000 going into implementation of this permit and to meet a regional standard of implementation for the new permit requirements, you'd probably need to double that.
All right, thanks, Dan. I just want to summarize real quick in terms of those, there were some dollar figures that were thrown out, and it's going to be important to talk about those in a moment. But you're currently spending about $55,000. The majority of that is dealing with NPDS permit stuff and maintenance. So what was identified is going from $55,000 to about $450,000 in terms of additional maintenance on the system. And then we'll talk about it in a moment, but Dan has identified you could be spending about $5 million in terms of capital projects if you were to look at over the next 10 years. So those, those are kind of the dollars you're spending, $55,000 today. You could potentially be spending close to half a million on maintenance if you were to do more proactive maintenance. And then there are capital projects out there that could address some of the flooding issues. So we'll tie that back to the fees that we'll talk about here in a minute. But do want to transition a little bit to talk about what a stormwater utility is. And I just have a definition here. It's, it's an approach to organizing and funding stormwater management with dedicated revenues generated from user fees based on the use of the stormwater system. So it's pretty analogous to how you handle your other utilities in the city right now. Your water utility, your sewer utility, your, your solid waste, those are all services that are provided. They're all funded from fees based upon the use of the specific service. So what we're talking about is essentially transitioning stormwater from a decentralized and funded with sewer fees to essentially be funding with stormwater fees based on contributions to the system. So it'd be moving you from what you currently have to something that would be similar to how you other, you manage the other utilities in the city. There's quite a few stormwater utilities in the state, and there's some real benefits to having one. Some of the benefits that I've listed here would be that it provides a dedicated, stable funding stream. So whenever you have a dedicated funding stream, you have the ability then to proactively manage a system. You can plan, you can coordinate over the long term, you can actually issue debt against the stormwater fees. Allows you to do capital projects. Another key aspect and benefit of stormwater utility is that it's fair and equitable. It's based on the contribution to the system. And I'll talk about that more in a minute. It's transparent and accountable, so it's similar to your other utilities in that it would be set up as an enterprise funds. It'd be easy to see where the funds are going, and it's just more transparent within the community and it's needs-based. So on an annual basis, as you do your budget, just like you do for water or sewer, you'd set the fees based upon the needs of the system. So those, those are some of the benefits. In terms of the fair and equity, fair and equitable discussion, I just want to talk about that a little bit more. In terms of the stormwater fee is based on the contribution to the system. And so as we know, it's pretty obvious, when you have a, an area that's paved over, it's going to generate more stormwater. So the more increased impervious area you have, the more increased runoff you're going to have. And so, for example, if you have a one-inch storm event and you have a one-acre open meadow, it's going to generate about 1,600 gallons of water. That's what's the stormwater that's going to come off that property. If you have a parking lot that's an acre, it's going to generate 26,000 gallons of water. So obviously a huge difference in terms of what you have to manage and the contribution to the system. So that kind of gives you an idea of the, of the general dynamic there. The way that you can typically handle that would be to set the stormwater fee based upon the impervious area on a parcel. And so the way we've looked at it, and this is pretty typical in the, in the state of Illinois as well as around the country, is that you'd set the fee equivalent to one, equivalent residential unit or ERU. And that would be your average impervious area on a residential parcel. And then when you look at non-residential parcels, and this happens to be the, the Public Works facility, that would be multiples of that impervious area. So you'd measure the impervious area, and this would essentially say that the Public Works facility is 58 ERUs in comparison to a single-family home. And that's a measure of the contribution. So we've done some sampling and looked at your entire system to look at basically three different types, classes of property. And you can look at the total parcel area within the, within the city, 201 million square feet. And then we estimated the impervious area, again, based on sampling, there's about 92 million square feet of impervious area in the City of Geneva. What's interesting is when you look at the commercial versus residential, obviously your commercial parcels have a lot more impervious as a, as a percentage of their total parcel area, so they're actually contributing more in terms of contribution. And then we can ultimately convert that into ERUs. We just take the average single-family home impervious area, which is about 5,000 square feet, divide that into the estimated impervious area, and that gives us our number of ERUs in the system. And it, that's essentially your billable unit that you could use to charge for the stormwater utility. So if you put in a stormwater fee of a dollar, that would generate $16,500 in stormwater fee revenues. So what this looks like in terms of if you were to actually move forward with a stormwater fee, we looked at various levels of service, and this is where I wanted to tie back to the discussion earlier in terms of spending more dollars on stormwater. So what this table shows here is the first, up at the top, we have operating expenditures, and then we have that broken down into various categories. If you were to essentially just to replace your existing $55,000 per year for stormwater operating and, and charge a stormwater fee, that would turn into about 30 cents. You can see it there on the, the first, first line. So 30 cents per ERU per month would generate $55,000. If you were to fund the NPDS compliance that Dan talked about, that would be an additional 20 cents. If you were to do the more proactive management of the system, you can see that's $1.75. And then that would be, say, in year one of this utility, if you were to fund all those activities, it'd be $2.24. And then those costs would go up with inflation over time. I mentioned $5 million in capital projects. If you were to move, move forward with those and fund those over a 10-year period, assuming you could issue debt to fund them, that would tack on and add on to the stormwater fee. So essentially down at the bottom, if you were to fund an entire program, proactive management as well as the capital program, over a 10-year period, you could potentially move towards $7.26. I want to emphasize, though, that that is obviously the discretion of the, of the council in terms of level of service. You have the ability to set the level of service, and you could stretch out those capital projects, you could do less maintenance, things of that sort. It's just like your water and sewer system, you essentially set that, that level of service. Typically, a stormwater utility will go in place, and the fees won't jump this high this quickly. That's what we would typically see.
Just to clarify, sir, that $7.26 at year 10, that's an annual fee?
That is a monthly fee.
It's a monthly fee?
It is a monthly fee. Per ERU.
Per ERU, okay, got it.
Yep.
I misunderstood.
Did I say annual?
No, no, no.
Okay. Yeah, those are the monthly fees. Yep.
Grab the AED.
So hopefully this will clarify. This is the, I have some sample parcels. So this is just a single-family parcel. 4,400 square feet of impervious area, that would be one ERU. So their fee in year one would be $2.24. In year five, it'd be $3.82, and then in year 10, it'd be $7.26, and that's the monthly, monthly fee. Again, you would not have to increase the fee to that level. You could choose to just fund maintenance of the system from the fee or something of that sort, but that gives you an all-in picture. This is a typical commercial parcel. Obviously, it has more impervious area, which is highlighted in the figure. That's four ERUs, so it would be essentially be four times what a single-family would pay per month, or about $9 in year one, $15, and then if you went all the way to the, to year 10, that would be $30 a month, $29 a month. And then one of the bigger parcels with impervious area, the Public Works facility, it's got 345,000 square feet of impervious. That'd be 58 ERUs, and you can see what the fee would be per month in each of the years. So what that looks like in terms of other stormwater utilities in the state, these are the monthly fees per ERU that other communities charge. I believe the closest two would probably be Aurora and Downers Grove. Aurora charges about $7 per month. Downers Grove is at $10.53. So obviously, if you just funded the initial maintenance, you'd be way at the bottom of the list. But these are the communities that, that I'm aware of that have established stormwater utilities. So in terms of the feasibility of a stormwater utility for the City of Geneva, it would be a feasible option. As we've talked about already, the current program really is not sufficient to meet the needs of the city's stormwater system. You're really in a reactive mode. And over the long term, you can define how long-term I'm talking about, but I don't believe it's sustainable eventually that you will need to be spending more dollars towards your stormwater maintenance and capital. And if you were to move forward with spending more, the additional dedicated funds would be best recovered through a stormwater fee. That would be the most appropriate way as compared to somebody's sewer bill or an alternative means. So I do believe it's, it's feasible. But in order to implement a stormwater fee within the city, you'd have to hit some, some key steps that need to be taken. The first issue would be that, given the fact that Geneva is not a home rule community, you would have to have a referendum in order to implement the fee. So there would certainly have to be support within the community. You'd have to do impervious area measurements for all non-residential parcels, as we, we've just done sampling. So you'd essentially have to establish that for the rest of the non-residential parcels, and then you'd have to adopt an ordinance establishing the fee. So I would be happy to take any questions. I know it's a lot to take in in a short amount of time.
I can't imagine there's any. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, questions or comments? Alderman Swanson, then Alderman Rodecky?
Early on in the presentation, you had a map of four sites that were a current flooding issue. And my question would be, would maintenance have taken care of those problems, or would those require capital improvements? What is the issue with those four sites?
Those, those four particular areas, oh, sure, sorry. Those particular areas are highlighted on the map because they're more significant flooding problems, and those would be a, a capital improvement-type project. There's either a conveyance issue, water can't get out of those areas quick enough, or there's a retention-type issue. We need to find someplace to store water in those areas so they're not impacting roadways or properties. So these are beyond what would be a typical maintenance fix or a repair-type fix.
So these would be included in your $5 million capital?
Absolutely. Yeah, the majority of the costs in the figures Dave mentioned were these larger capital improvement-type projects for the system that the infrastructure just doesn't exist within the city right now to handle the, the drainage.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alderman Rodecky?
Yeah, I guess actually, that's what my, my questions and comments, more statements are exactly what Alderman Swanson brought up. As I recall, the discussion about this issue was really, it was put into motion in 2015 because of this area, because of the problems that this area has. And, you know, in my mind, when I hear fair and equitable, I think about the other parts of the city that have been developed, and, and they have proper storm drainage, and they have proper things. To me, it seems like, you know, those areas of the city are going to be funding a capital improvement for a very small part of the city that really is going to require this. I understand that some of these fees will be used for, for general maintenance, that they will inure benefit to other parts of the community, but it seems as though the impetus behind this study and this discussion was for a rather small area. So I, I would be a little bit hesitant to, you know, to me, it would seem that an SSA might be a more appropriate fix or some other method for this type of a area. So just some general comments. Thanks.
Mr. Babka, do you want to address those specific comments?
I would at the, at your discretion. What I would like to point out, though, is that when we first started looking at this in 2015, myself and the city engineer Brian Schreiber traced back the watersheds for both the Fargo and Route 31 culvert, as well as the Achiever and Shady Avenue culvert. And those two drain structures there are basically taking the runoff of literally everything east of Randall Road, all the way up to Brisher Road. So better than, at least the middle third of the community is sending their stormwater runoff through those, those two locations. So it's, it's not just a specific neighborhood that's having an issue. Everything within the city of Geneva drains into the Fox River. So the neighborhoods that are closest to the Fox River are going to be taking the brunt of that, that runoff, because eventually it all does get down to them.
May I add to that? And what I've just put on this slide is the most significant drainage issues in the city right now. There are 10 times this in the city as a whole. Most of the smaller drainage problems are in the older downtown portions, but there are drainage issues throughout the city. I should, I just didn't, I wanted to make it clear that it wasn't just these four, these four areas.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I absolutely empathize with Alderman Rodecky's points. And I think Director Babica's point in terms of, these are funnel points for larger portions of the community. But this would also help kind of an ongoing issue with some of our other neighborhoods. We've got a neighborhood with a rural cross-section with silted-in swales that have drainage problems that this would also go a long way to helping those neighborhoods directly. Thanks.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor Burns. I'm new to city council. I would like some background information. Can you, can someone tell me what the relationship is with the city of Geneva and Baxter Woodman, and why, why are we having this presentation here tonight? And is Baxter Woodman rece, receiving a fee for the study that they have done? I, I just need some, like, background information, if you would.
The city council entered into a contract with Stantec Consulting, and Baxter Woodman is a consultant or subconsultant for Stantec Consulting. The city council directed the Public Works Department to conduct a stormwater feasibility study, and it's within the strategic planning session. We went through the RFP process. We selected a consultant, brought that in front of the city council. In early 2016, the city council entered into that contract to investigate this feasibility study. So that this is, this policy has been driven by the city council, maybe by some of the predecessors before some of you have sat in these council chambers. But this is a fairly technical study, and it's taken some time to get us to where we're at. So that the driving impetus from this was the city council had a strategic planning session in 2015 to direct us to move forward with this. That was then reinforced again at the 2016 strategic planning session to ensure that we, we kept this project moving forward. And this is where the end result of that is this presentation you see before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. And the four sites that are identified on the map, along with the others, I, I hear there are 10 or so sites. Are the, were those identified as just ongoing areas with problematic flooding in the event of, like, storms? And is that what drove this, this study and the strategic, or is that what was talked about in the strategic plan meeting a few years back?
Yeah. Let me, let me start back again. When in 2015, we had some significant flooding issues, both in Fargo and in the Achiever area, to where Achiever was shut down because it was overtopped, and the, the police department determined it was no longer safe for vehicles to go through there. We received a lot of feedback from the residents, multiple sources of feedback of yards flooding, properties being adversely impacted. We did not have any building property loss that I'm aware of, but explaining that to a resident that just because you have water within 18 inches of your window wells, technically, your house didn't flood, but when you can't go out your front door, you have a different opinion on that one. So the, the city council acknowledged the fact that we were going to look into this issue. One of the ongoing maintenance issues that Dan brought up was, he referred to the rural cross-sections. We have a lot of streets within the city of Geneva that do not have concrete and curbs and dedicated underground collection systems. And those were originally designed at one time, back in the 40s, 50s, with drainage ditches along the edges to convey that stormwater. Those ditches have become compromised over the years through silt, through being filled in by the residents or being filled in by other utility work. And we have pockets of water where the waters simply can't get out of the neighborhood, so it ponds and then becomes mosquito breeding areas inside neighborhoods. So that is part of the ongoing maintenance that Dan had referred to, above and beyond the capital projects. These capital projects are re, re eliminating or modifying some of these choke points to get the water through the city, because we are a fairly built-out community. We don't have the luxury of putting in a detention facility somewhere near Fargo and Route 31, the, now without acquiring a significant property. So how to get that water through that choke point is a fairly costly endeavor, because it involves IDOT, it involves the King County Forest Preserve, it involves the Department of Natural Resources because of the Fox River. So these are fairly expensive endeavors to remove these choke points. But some of that ongoing maintenance, it's more than just repairing the storm sewers, which is what we do internally at Public Works when they fail. It's inspecting them in advance. It's getting them repaired in advance when they're a minor repair, as opposed to a catastrophic failure. It is getting those ditches re-graded and then maintained permanently, so the water is being conveyed through the neighborhood. The, these are some of the long-term maintenance issues that ended up at the $495,000 mark, I believe, is what you saw. So it, it is not just a isolated issue in the older part of town. It is not just because the west side has structures that aren't failing. The west side is in a grace period right now, for lack of a better word, because it's so young. These structures aren't, you know, another 20 years, those structures will start failing, and we'll be having the same discussion on Fisher Farms. So it, it is, it is a significant maintenance issue that, that we need to address. It's, it's one of those that we've been looking at very seriously, both myself and Brian Schreiber, and you can see by the staff that have in attendance here today. It's taken very seriously by my supervisors also, and we're, we're constantly scrambling to try and to find the resources to be more than just reactive. And again, hence, that's, that's why we're here tonight.
Alderman Malaudra?
Yes, I want to be careful that people understand. It's not about four specific properties. This, this area is an area of a larger network, and it's an area of a larger network that is, the infrastructure, I guess I would say, is undersized for the use case or the problem that we face today. That problem consists of development to the west that probably wasn't envisioned in the 40s when this stuff was built. I would also add the, I don't know if the right word is, the increasing frequency of heavy rain. 100, 100-year storms and 50-year storms are more like every other year and every year of storms. So it's a, it's a system that's in need of, of upgrade, just, just like, you know, sometimes you have to do with IT systems or electrical systems and things like that. These four properties are a flashpoint, but they're just a symptom of a larger issue. That's all.
Alderman Ruby?
I'm curious, is there a comprehensive list of all the problem areas? And I ask, there are two areas in my ward specifically that I know of that I am surprised aren't highlighted, but apparently, these people have it worse.
It's from Couts Road to Peck Road and Gray Street?
I would hesitate, hesitate to tell you that there is a comprehensive list, but we have an ongoing list of projects and priorities, and where the greatest issues are that we need to address. I'm, I'm well aware of the structures within the Geneva East. Subdivision has a relatively recent development within the last, within this fiscal cycle. So compared to some of these issues, that, that's a relatively new issue that has been added to the list.
Alderman Burghart?
Thank you for being here tonight. Yeah, Mike and I have dealt with these stormwater issues more times than you'd think in my two and a half years on the council. And it is, and spread pretty, pretty widely in our ward, and it's, it's really hard to go to these residents who have real serious water issues in their yards and in their basements and on their streets, and tell them the city really doesn't have money, resources, or program to do this. And that's not your fault. It's just historically, cities did not have stormwater utilities, right? I mean, that's just, it was kind of a catch-as-catch-can thing. And, and over the last couple decades, is it some of these suburbs have, who've had more serious problems have gotten on top of this. One of my close friends live in, in Elmhurst, and, you know, in the last five years, they've had, they had such flooding problems. I mean, it was like almost a revolution there in terms of people just, you know, storming City Hall to demand answers. And they are a home-rule community. They ended up doing something with the quarry there, and I know it's, it's improved a lot, but it's, I, I, like Craig said, with these rains we're having, I, I do worry that if we don't get in front of this, you know, five years down the road, we're going to have the same kind of situation with residents that are just, you know, I already feel it in our ward, and I just think it's going to continue to be a problem. My heart sank when we got to the referendum slide, though, because I thought, you know, that's a, that, that would be quite a, we'd have quite a story, quite a narrative to have to tell residents again, and to convince them that this is an issue. Everyone in the city has a vested interest in, in tackling. But I certainly believe it is an issue, and I'm glad you're here tonight. Thank you.
I did just want to comment, if I could, on the referendum one. I don't know if you followed Downers Grove, but they're, they are home-rule. They put in a stormwater utility. I helped them back in 2013. But after they put it in, they had so much pressure over time that eventually, they did put it to the community, and they, they had a referendum and asked people, "Do you want us to go back to property taxes, or do you want to keep the stormwater utility?" And they kept the stormwater utility. So it has, has been voted on within the public in the state of Illinois in the past. So you would have to do, obviously, have to do a fair amount of public education, outreach. People understand. But the reality is, is not, do you want to spend more? The reality is, you're going to have to spend more. It's just a matter of time. I don't know how long that is, but eventually, you have to spend more. And once you get to that point, what's the best way to recover that revenue? Is it appropriate to get it from sewer fees, or is it appropriate to get it from property taxes, or is it appropriate to get it based on how people contribute to the system? And I think that's the biggest argument. But I don't want people to get lost in the, you know, where flooding is happening and things like that. The reality is, is that, you know, $55,000 a year is not sustainable. You're not taking care of your pipes. Your pipes, basically, you're assuming right now have an infinite useful life, and that's not the case. Eventually, they will fail. It's just a matter of how long, and I don't think that's going to be in the next couple of years, but eventually, you'll need to be spending more.
May I ask two questions?
Sure.
The first is a multi-jurisdictional question. Should Geneva proceed with a referendum? And the voters say, "Absolutely, this makes sense for the long run." Our friends at the UP and other jurisdictional authorities, do they fall under that same demand that we have through a vote on a referendum, so we can exact those ERUs from them? Or do they have authority to opt out because of their jurisdiction?
Anyone within the city limits you could assess the fee to, is my understanding, if that's what we're talking about. You're talking outside of the city limits?
I'm talking within, of course, yeah, so.
Yeah, I believe you'd have the ability to assess, just like you would for any other utility within the, within your limits.
So every not-for-profit, every school?
Yes, mhm, absolutely.
Okay, second question. And, and this is more, it's not rhetorical, but I just, it's dawned on me. Why the heck, since we have the authority to raise sewer fees as a council, why wouldn't we just raise sewer fees equivalent to what would help capture the $5 million over 10 years? Call it a day.
You could. It's a, gets into an equity issue and legality of that. I think, I mean, Northbrook, I believe, they assess stormwater fees based on water usage. So there are, there is precedent, but I think if you were truly challenged legally, there would be, it may be tough to, to withstand a legal challenge because of the, the lack of a rational nexus between the sewer generation and the stormwater runoff. But there are communities that do it. I know Northbrook has it within their water rates. That's where they get their stormwater fee revenues.
Director Babica, does our, do our friends in Elburn have a, I don't believe they do, stormwater utility fee?
Not that I'm aware of.
And of course, our friends in Mill Creek fall under county and township jurisdiction.
Correct.
Is it safe to assume that the water from our friends west of Peck Road heads east to the Fox River? Does it stop at the Mill Creek watershed, or does it continue on? I mean?
There, there are different watersheds where the water makes its way back into the Fox River, and eventually, everything in our area does dump into the Fox River.
Right, okay.
But, for example, the Wildwood subdivision, which we're doing a more of an in-depth basin study.
Right.
It's, it's our assumption right now that we're taking runoff from outside the city and then transporting that runoff through the city's infrastructure.
We believe that might be the case in Miller Road, too.
Correct, correct. That's, that's the, the Wildwood subdivision. So legally, though, with this, the way stormwater responsibilities and drainage responsibilities are established, is that the receiving property has the obligation to convey the water it's being, it's being brought to it, through it. You have that responsibility. So you cannot arbitrarily build a berm around the city of Geneva and block runoff from, from going through our system.
So a referendum for a moat?
Probably not going to work. But, but at the same time, the, the drainage laws and the King County stormwater are, it's also say that you cannot adversely impact the receiving property either. The example I would bring up, that was Charles and Ford, where the residents are concerned that the new construction on Charles is adversely impacting their property. So there, there are protections and obligations for the conveyance of drainage. The question comes down to is, at least in the, the Miller Road or the Wildwood subdivision, is was the infrastructure that was installed in the 90s adequately sized to handle the flow that it was receiving prior to it being a disturbed site? And that's what Dan's looking into under a separate contract.
Alderman Marx?
Could we go back to the ERUs? I was just, just have some, so does, so I, I understand that you were going to go through, and for the commercial sites, you know, look at those all independently. I mean, every residential property within, I would think, within the city of Geneva probably has different size. Do we have to do that for every individual, or do we just automatically assume individual size?
Couple of ways to handle it. One would be, you could do a flat fee. There's a lot of communities. Most of the communities in Illinois have a flat fee per single-family resident, and then equivalents of that for non-residential. But some communities like Downers Grove, they actually do tiers. So that if you're in 500 to 2,000 square feet of impervious, you pay maybe .5 ERUs. Then you have your average in the middle, and then if you have a lot of impervious on a single-family, you would fall into maybe 1.5 ERUs. So you can do tiers of impervious, which limits the analysis in that you don't have to have exact. I set up the Village of Weneka, and they actually wanted to do an actual ERUs by every- I set up the Village of Weneka and they actually wanted to do an actual ERUs by every single individual parcel. So they did map every single parcel in the impervious area there.
That was my question, if you go through that, but you-
You don't have to.
You don't have, but if someone has a large yard, they may want that, right? And, and how do you handle that then on an individual? How, I guess I'm getting too much into the nuts and bolts, but I'm just trying to figure out how it all works. Because someone's going to say, hey, listen, 50% of their yard is covered by a house in minor area.
To Alderman Marx's point, if, if I have a bigger yard than you, you have a bigger patio, you change out your patio to a brick, which is now-
Pervious.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at, Mayor. I, I'm trying to figure out how, how to make this fair if, if it's going, because that's the questions that are going to come up, I mean-
Couple ways you could handle that. There are communities that have calculated pervious and impervious, you can imagine it gets more and more complicated.
Yeah.
You can do credits, somebody has a detention pond on their property, they get an ongoing credit. The benefit to that is that you can then encourage positive behaviors towards stormwater management, you can encourage somebody to put in pervious pavement and that gets rid of the impervious. So if you think about it, as you go down this road, it really allows you to manage stormwater in a very proactive way and that you can encourage, you know, good behaviors, you can encourage people to put in rain gardens and all those things, but you know, obviously it gets more and more complex as you go down the road. It's not a perfect science, clearly, you know, we're not measuring the actual water coming off somebody's property, but it's been determined to be the most approx, the best proxy for contribution of, to the system.
So normally you kind of lay a, you assume every residential lot has the equal amount of output and you set that as the ERU is what I finally got, is what I'm getting from this.
If you wanted to do a flat, flat fee for all residential or you could do it into the tiers, where you essentially say if you have a lot of impervious, you fall into the highest tier, the average, and then a small, a small tier. And you can tier the fees that way, that's what Downers Grove does. So there's, there's different ways to slice it, but you certainly don't have to measure every single, single-family impervious area.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Decker.
Two, two quick questions. One, do we know of any non-home rule communities that have passed a utility stormwater?
There is, and it's escaping me at, at the moment. I did some research and I think it was about 20 years ago, there is a community that I believe that-
I got it.
That is not home rule, it's nothing recently.
And I guess my question to the chair then is, is this a german topic for us to discuss in our planning session? Would this be-
Oh, absolutely.
To, to, whether or not to go for, I mean, I don't have a lot of-
Or a fifth Monday following, exactly. I think tonight's idea was to present and then the, the last slide, Alderman Burkharts has now, we all have used the AED to revive ourselves with, then we can continue the discussion in more depth, if you will.
Yeah, I think the study speaks for itself, I get it all, but it's the decision by moving forward that, you know, the reality of that, what the cost is and what, what that takes. So, thank you, thanks for your part.
Thank you.
The good news is that we have, we have kept our promise with respect to the residents who have had considerable issues over the years, that we've invested the money to conduct the study and now that the study is conducted, the onus falls on us whether to quote, advance the referendum or at the very least publicize what we've discussed tonight, which of course will be, and this report will be placed on the city's website, et cetera. So, it's interesting. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Alderman Cooper.
Sorry.
What measures could the city be taking immediately? Obviously, this isn't a quick fix. Are there, obviously you mentioned pervious, like for instance Kane County Cougars, their entire parking lot is pervious. Are there things that we could do as far as future zoning and issues to address stormwater more effectively? How about more street sweeping, tighter ordinances as relates to leaves and curbs and gutters that, that dam and, and create problems with stormwater? There are some other things, obviously you guys are experts in this area, I can't believe that it's all or nothing, I believe that there's obviously things that could be addressed to, to better deal with stormwater, that if we paid attention to it, would maybe help reduce some of the, the storm challenges that we have. I, I said the experts.
Thanks. Wow. Ouch, ouch, boy.
Just kidding, just kidding.
EVs parking sliding further and further back. One of the things that we've been doing, and, and it's not just under my tenure, but it's been an ongoing program for the last five years, is that we've been doing street reconstructions. We have been enhancing the conveyance capacity of the underground stor, storm system. We did that on River Street, for example, we improved it from a 12-inch structure to an 18-inch structure. We did the same things on Richards and Stevens this summer and the summers before that, we've, we've also increased the conveyance issues. This year, as we're starting to look into next year's program, some of the streets we're looking at doing or considering doing have rural cross-sections. So now we're looking at including ditch work and a ditch regrading, but I can tell you from previous experience, that is a, that is going to be a hot political topic because some of those residents have gotten very used to being able to park off the street and we reestablished that ditch, all of a sudden their on-street parking goes away and they don't like that. They also don't like having to mow ditches. And then again, the problem we have, which goes back to the Charles and Ford discussion, is that even if I regrade the ditches at the top of the hill, that does no good because sooner or later that water has to go downhill and get to one of those discharge points under the Fox River. So again, that's, it's maybe not as simple as just to reestablish the ditches on Charles, I have to be able to get that water from Charles and Ford to 31 to then get it to one of those discharge points. And then I'm going to let Dan finish the, the conversation, but that's what we're current, that's what we're currently doing right now.
So for every stormwater master plan I've ever developed, there's a, there's a number of large improvement projects that need to be put in place to handle the big storm events, but there are also smaller, I like to call them early out, things that can be done that can help with the smaller, more frequent events. Some more frequent storm events happen 10 times more often than the big flooding events do. And those early out type projects are, some of them you've already mentioned here, they like pervious pavements, rain garden programs, rain barrel programs. A rain barrel program, or a rain barrel on one property doesn't do much, but 500 rain barrels across the city and 300 rain gardens does make a difference on the smaller, more frequent storms. So I do try to balance what can we do today versus what kind of major capital improvements have to be put in place that need to be funded, you know, some, some built-up reserves before those can happen.
First, some of these areas that don't have pervious, I mean, coming from agriculture for background, tile is a pretty effective tool as relates to moving water and creating drainage. I mean, are you familiar with any municipalities that have used tile in, in-
Alderman Cooper, forgive me, hold your chair.
Sorry. Are you familiar with anyone that's used tile in, in a urban setting, similar to what, what's used in agriculture to use as sort of a stopgap until more long-term solutions are, well, funding is available to do a more long-term solution?
We've actually put tile in, almost every year was part of the infrastructure program behind the curb to basically enhance the drainage characteristics of the parkways because in some cases where the curb is, we're, you know, maybe 12 to 15 inches higher than a sidewalk. Stevens was a, a great example of that when it was rebuilt four years ago. There was drain tile put behind the curb, it's not called drain tile, but it's essentially drain tile. But it serves that same purpose, so we, we do that currently already.
And that, that ties into our existing stormwater system then, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But again, drain, the drain tile still has to be maintained.
Right.
And, and that's, goes back to the choke point that we're at again now is, basically to maintain this infrastructure, I have to take the underground utility crew off of maintaining hydrants, valves and water and sanitary to maintain these structures and it becomes a robbing Peter to pay Paul approach.
Thank you.
The only time we've worked with field tile situations is as a community has expanded and changed the nature of the field tile system. It may not have been mapped, it may not have been known how the drainage or the, the tiles worked with the hydraulics in that area and it was changed when the community expanded. So water's coming on to the community and it used to go a different way. So sometimes there's been some restructuring or realignment of agricultural drainage to keep that water out of the city system.
And we actually just did that at Prairie Green, not more than six months ago.
Alderman Ruby.
Rich, I have an extremely basic question for you. In walking through my alley to Dairy Queen today, I noticed every storm sewer was completely clogged with leaves. Is there, are the residents supposed to get out there and clear those off or?
We have scheduled street sweeping that goes through the area. Unfortunately, we had over seven inches of rain on-
Right.
On which, as much as we work with the residents, try to get the word out about not putting our leaves out on the street early, prior to leave collection, there were a number of sites that did do that and that creates flooding issues, which is what you're, you're seeing. The street sweeper, you know, will go through there, but again, we contract out of street sweeping.
Sure.
So unless we can divert staff from other duties to go do that, or we wait for the street sweeper, you know, the, the kind event is for the property owners to try to clear that material off. I do that in front of my own house because, well, granted, I'm a public works director, so I'm a little bit maybe more attuned to that, but I don't want the water pounding in front of my house, I'd much rather have it go down to my neighbor's house, it's going to sit inside and watch the game instead of not worry about it too much. So I love my neighbors, most of them.
Well, in our alley, it's not anybody's property, so I wasn't sure if, if I should just get out there with, I was kicking off a few of them and then got to be too much.
Yeah, there's, there's 40 structures through those alleys back through there, so it's a little bit too much for one person, but that, that is, it's, you know, it's, it's a sense of community.
Okay.
We, we have a limited amount of resources in the public works facility and, you know, it, it does, you know, if everybody helps each other out in these times of need, it, it can go a long way to preventing small problems from becoming big problems.
Okay.
But it all starts with not putting your leaves out on the street before collection.
Or in the street at all. In this case, I assumed it was just the rainwater carrying the leaves off the ground, right? So I guess public service announcement, if you see a, if you see leaves on a drain, brush them out of the way, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Babica.
Thank you.
Moving on, folks, to item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments offered by anyone on the council this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be considered with one motion. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Which my Alderman Marx, second by Alderman Bruno. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Gene McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Decker.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item five passes with nine affirmative votes and one absent. We skip down to number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $3,020,740.45.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Hall packet on the website.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Bruno to pay the bills as presented and available on our website, the city's new website, and available in our packet, seconded by Alderman Swanson. Questions or comments regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Gene McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Decker.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
The motion passes with nine affirmative votes and one absent. We skip down to, according to my schedule anyways, number 12 new, excuse me, number 13 new business. I'll defer to our guests in the audience first, ladies, gentlemen. Questions or comments of what you've witnessed this evening? These folks are here as part of a high school assignment, so. Any questions or comments for the council members or any of the professional staff, Riveted, aren't you? Anyone from the dais? I do have one comment to make if no one else does.
Thank you.
Do you? Well, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
I never speak, I know. So I invite everybody to visit the Harrison School neighborhood where I live, pardon me. There's an association there and they have a Halloween decorating contest this year. I'm sure I'll win, but it's for the first year, so there, there are 10 people signed up so far and starting the 24th, you can get a map and visit them. So if you have kids or you're interested in Halloween, come by.
Mr. Clerk, what would your costume be?
Oh, no, this is my front yard as a costume.
Oh, it's the whole, the whole yard?
Yeah, decorating your house.
Are you using pervious surfaces?
Ah.
Folks, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, I have prepared my comments because I feel it's important to be clear in my statements, so please forgive me. The following comments are directed toward the cowards who have posted signs on city-owned property, utility poles to be exact, that are clearly meant to intimidate our residents. This afternoon, I personally removed a sign and I know that our police officers removed multiple signs over the weekend and these signs read, and I quote, "Love kills pride." The sign was designed to appear similar to the "Got Love" signs that many of us have seen popping up throughout town. The clever approach to make this sign look nearly identical to the "Got Love" signs is, in my opinion, as sinister and as sick as the message it conveys. To use the word kills, to say the least, is frightening and at worst threatening. I am not intimidated and the city of Geneva is not intimidated. To the cowards who come out only at night to express their prejudice with colorful signage and menacing language, then scurry back into their sinkholes from which they came, if your commitment to your position is so strong, then show us who you are. Post the signs you've clearly invested money in on your own property. But I know you won't, for you don't have the courage of your convictions to do so because your convictions are not meant to be debated, discussed, or dissected. Your convictions, your bigotry, is only to be disseminated in anonymity and with a heaping dose of animosity. Now, the website that the sign shrewdly directs people to has no contact information whatsoever. There's no way of knowing who you are or what you are. So if your apostles are the ones vandalizing the city of Geneva property and trying to intimidate our citizens and guests, I have no way of asking you to please cease and desist other than to use this platform this evening. And then to wrap your message as quote, "God's work," but not have the courage to stand up and identify yourself as doing God's work is equally disgusting. I can only suspect that you have the fear, pun intended, of being outed. To the anonymous bullies who lack the courage to show your faces, you have failed to intimidate this mayor and you have failed to intimidate this community. Geneva respects all its citizens, whomever they love. And so to the question, "Got love?", I have never been more motivated and never been more proud to answer yes, I sure as heck do. Thank you. Anyone curious to see the sign that I dismantled, I will not show it in public because it is upsetting. And in case anyone asks, we have the authority as elected officials to remove signage from public property. So, and this one was beautifully stapled with 12 staples, so it was quite the scene to watch me pull over and take that off. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss, let me get this language straight, ladies and gentlemen. Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or its representatives. Motion by Marx, seconded by Ruby, I believe.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Gene McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Decker.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, there's no action following tonight's closed session, we should be fairly brief, I think, so if we return and you're not here, we will take no offense. That's right.